Ending up the season ranked number one in football and playing for the national championship. And I'm told that if they win the national championship, as an alumnus, I'm expected to stand on my chair and sing the Notre Dame fight song at the next city council meeting. The first item is appointment of David Brush to fill the unexpected term of Robert Taylor to the Parks and Recreation Board. Could I have a motion?
Can you move?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item are comments by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor, members of the council. First item under my agenda this evening is a report on the Community Task Force, and I'd ask Dr. Julie Cooley to please come forward and brief us as to the work of the committee and the task force.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council persons. Thank you for having me this evening to talk about the Community Wellness Task Force. It's a sobering committee to be part of, but yet, on the other hand, it's exciting in a way to see a community and all its organizations come together. It's been quite incredible. So, again, thank you. And I'd like to start with thanking all of you in the City of Lake Forest for their support. I'm just going to give you just the highlights of the most recent activity, but the city continues to be so supportive through Croya and through other ways and helping provide a variety of things for the task force. One of the larger commitments, I would say, or more significant commitments, Mr. Kylie made sure that a crisis communication hub was put in place. And so, in the last few months, that exists, hadn't existed prior to that. It would be really, really helpful, not only in the type of event that we're concerned about in terms of youth suicide, but any crisis now. There'll be a chain of command and a great communication. I'm not sure if Todd has updated on some of the events at Croya, but Croya is, you know, but amazing in the way that they've taken charge and changed some very specific things in the way they do business, making sure that volunteers are trained in the signs and symptoms of suicide. Of course, the wonderful grant that they got for free counseling for our community and some, a variety of things, including revamping the peer training at the high school. So, again, a very strong partner in Croya, and I would expect, of course, that to continue. Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital, again, a strong partner, and it's been quite interesting for me to be kind of a simple school person, to all of a sudden be in the same room with individuals that run the hospital and to see how concerned they are about these issues and what they will do to support it and help, including funding Dr. Mark Reinike, you know, renowned psychiatrist through, or psychologist through Northwestern University and researcher. And he's, we've had him at our beck and call as a consultant, and it's been very, very appreciated and powerful. They've mobilized all the pediatricians in the area through the hospital to make sure that any children, adolescents who are being, doing their annual school physicals will be screened for depression and mental illness. So, I believe they're going to take a leadership role with pediatricians in this entire area through the types of things that they've done. A couple other things, the high school I'll leave for last, but Lead took specific actions also. They've developed a clinical advisory board of mental health professionals so that they can stay in tune to what should be on their website and how they can support that. They've added a link for people who are in a panic and what should they do. So, that's been powerful. And the high school has just ramped up its training and more people and all sorts of ways to make sure that we've got some really in-depth trained people in the way of our school psychologists, our social workers. And Dr. Reinike is going to be with us on January 16th for a three-hour training event. So, many, many things happening in this area, and appreciate being invited to share that, and maybe we'll give you an update sometime in the future. Do you have any questions? Hope that wasn't too fast. I wanted to be brief and...
Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you, Julie. It's now my pleasure, actually, to turn the microphone over to Alderman Novit. You might recall about two months ago, Alderman Novit talked about all the wonderful achievements that were being accomplished by our student athletes at Lake Forest High School. So, we've invited them here this evening, and Alderman Novit has a list of those accomplishments. So, Alderman, I'll turn it to you.
No, and thanks, Bob. And where Alderman Palmer, Acting Mayor Palmer, has mentioned Notre Dame, Notre Dame pales compared to Lake Forest High School on the fall athletic program because, of course, Notre Dame had one team that excelled this year, but it seems like every team at Lake Forest High School just exceeded expectations. And the involvement and the success met by all the participating members was, it's questionable could it ever happen again this legendary year. Among the teams that accomplished this year were the girls' golf team, and they were conference and regional champions. The boys' golf team was regional champs, and they finished second at the sectionals. The girls' cross-country team were conference and regional champs. The boys' cross-country team, also to show that they were going to at least meet expectations, the top runner, Billy Bun, took second at the sectionals and then fifth at the state meet. We have in attendance today at our council meeting, members of other teams that equaled or exceeded what the other teams did miraculously. And I'm not sure how we want to do this. Possibly, if I could ask for the members of the teams to step up or the persons who are present to line up in front. It might be appreciated.
Okay.
But first, I have to put my glasses on because honestly, the list is so long.
Kent, you're either going to have to talk into your microphone or I'll have to give you the other one.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Otherwise, all the parents at home won't hear you.
Oh, they'll hear me. This might take a little longer than the Notre Dame recognition. I have to put my glasses on just so I could read the names of everyone involved. But first, with the girls' swimming team, they were sectional champions this year. And at the state meet, freshman swimmer, which it's amazing that someone who's just a freshman could do so well, Riley Lanigan placed fourth in the hundred fly and fifth in the 200 individual medley. And I'd like to ask Riley to step up if she would, if she's present today.
She's studying.
She's studying?
Yeah, she's still prepping.
Well, maybe that's a good thing after all the swimming. The girls' field hockey team were state champs, which, again, is amazing. This is the eighth win in 12 years, which is just an incredible accomplishment or an incredible run of success. Again, it's frightening, and certainly Notre Dame would pale next, but I think they've won eight national championships in a hundred years.
Stop picking on Notre Dame.
We'll see what happens in the Alabama game. The boys' football team advanced to the semifinal round in the state tournament, and that's the first time that's happened since 1978. And kind of the embarrassing part is, a lot of the members of that team are as old as I am. So, it's been a long time since that's occurred. And not to be topped, the girls' tennis team was conference, sectional, and state champs, and that was the second time in three years that's occurred. And at the state meet, individually, the senior Elizabeth Zarandi, I'm going to mispronounce it.
Sorry.
Everyone mispronounces my name a little bit, but came in fifth in the state in singles, and the seniors, Maddie Lipp, and freshman, and I'm not mispronouncing intentionally, and again, Christina Zarandi, were doubles champions in the state. And again, the accomplishment of reaching those goals, dedicating all the hours to accomplish that, certainly it's recognized by the city, all that's involved, and it was exciting to follow.
Miss one under the swimming.
Swimming, oh, and not to be left out was, in the swimming, was senior Nina Nisley. And is Nina present today?
She is.
You overwhelmed everyone because in the state meet, in the state, you were a champion for the 50 free for swimmers with disabilities, the 100 free for swimmers with disability, and might as well go for the hat trick, which is amazing, the 200 free for swimmers with disabilities. It's a year that's not going to be achieved. And city council, the mayor, city manager, and all involved, we recognize what you've done. We've been excited by the accomplishments that have been achieved by all involved, and certainly representing the community, we're just proud of you. You know, I choked up a little bit. Just great accomplishments. You're role models for my children, everyone's children in this community, and this is something that I hope will stay with you for years to come.
Thank you. All right. Tim, do you want to come up and say something?
Sure.
Thanks.
Acting Mayor Alderman, city manager Kylie, also, we have the police chief and the fire deputy in the back. I just want to share how special it is when our student athletes from Lake Forest High School can partner with the city on all these wonderful events. We were able to have our girls' field hockey team win the state title at home. We were able to have that boys' semifinal football game, which was more than just a game. It was a community event on our home field. And that's what we envisioned a few years ago when we went out to the taxpayers and asked for a referendum to help build some facilities that would be state-of-the-art. And we're incredibly proud that we're able to bring in front of the city council some of these young, wonderful, wonderful student athletes, men and women who are, this is just the beginning of amazing careers. Many of them are going to go on at the next level and compete in their particular endeavors. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the city council for welcoming us here today and let you know that at Lake Forest High School, we really do feel part of this community, and it's clear that there's a ton of people in this room that have gone to lengths to help it make it feel that way. So, on behalf of Lake Forest High School, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
And... No, again, I was going to ask at least that we could have a resolution recognizing all the members of these teams for the achievements that they've accomplished for this year. And again, just, all efforts are appreciated. It's great.
Do you want to make that as your resolution?
Yeah, do we have a second?
Come on, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted.
Thanks.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. You're certainly welcome to stay, but with the rest of the agenda, isn't quite as exciting as your recognition. I can assure you of that. Yeah, you got homework. Go home.
Thank you.
The other thing I did want to mention that's not on the published agenda is the appointment of the Lake Forest Hospital, I think mine's on, if you can hear me. Sorry, we'll wait for the room to clear.
Somebody's on the radio.
The appointment of the task force for Lake Forest Hospital Expansion Project. You might recall that when the city council approved the special use permit for the redevelopment and expansion of the hospital, one of the conditions there was an appointment of a task force. We did solicit resumes or applications in the community. We received almost 20 applications. It was a hard decision, but it's my pleasure to announce that the committee members are the following. Ed Chandler, who will be the chairman of the advisory committee, Craig Bergman, Rafael Carrera, Jeffrey Gannon, Susan Garrett, Charles Colmeyer, John Santel, Stephen Wright, and Augie Ziccharelli. I've notified them all of their appointment. They all were very excited about starting up work. We probably won't have the first meeting until sometime after the first of the year, but we're really excited about getting the committee started and helping the hospital on this very important project. So, if you have any other questions regarding any of those appointments, please feel free to contact me. And then finally, as council knows, at the, I think it was on Friday when we amended our agenda, we added an item with respect to the issue of medical marijuana that is under discussion at the State of Illinois right now, and there was an individual who came before the city council, I think last month, expressing concern with respect to that. The city attorney and I have had some discussions with it. We did send out a resolution. I believe you have a copy of that resolution in front of you this evening. But basically, what this will do is it will direct the issue to our plant commission because this is a zoning code issue. It isn't a matter of whether we can permit it or not permit it. We're required to have some permitted locations within town, but we need to somehow put it into our zoning codes after having the necessary public hearings and so forth. But with that, let me turn the mic over to the city attorney, who can give you a little more details with respect to the proposed resolution this before you this evening.
Good evening, members of the council. Just for clarity, the resolution tonight is in anticipation of some action by the general assembly. If the general assembly does not act, this becomes a mood issue. One of the concerns is that we don't want to be caught flat-footed. We don't know when the general assembly will act, if they do. We don't know when the governor will sign it into law, but the pending bill would become bill upon, will become law upon the bill's passage and signature by the governor. We're not scheduled to meet again for approximately a month, and in order to make sure that there's not some interim activity that would allow one of these dispensaries to be established sort of in the absence of regulation, we do recommend that the council approve this resolution. Under Illinois law, when a zoning action has been initiated by the corporate authorities here, the city council, that essentially puts a hold on matters until that action is completed. It's known as the red flag doctrine. The red flag goes up because it's under consideration. No one can claim a vested right in the interim. And so, this resolution will raise that proverbial red flag and allow the city to act in a more contemplative manner if this bill is passed in determining how it would be regulated under our zoning code. Couple things about the bill that's pending. One, our home rule status is irrelevant because the state has decided that home rule authority would not supersede any of the provisions of the bill. Two, to the extent that it's passed and these dispensaries become authorized, our ability to control them is somewhat limited, and it would not be allowed to be more strictly regulated than how the bill itself is established. One of the things under the current draft of the bill, however, is that there would only be one such dispensary per senatorial district, meaning there's no more than 59 in the state. And I think that, you know, at least by taking this action, we allow the city, if the bill is passed, to fully assess its current regulations and be prepared in the event something is approved and desires to locate in the city to make sure that it's going to be located in a way that meets what we have long established as our zoning standards. So, this is a bit of a belts-and-suspenders action, but again, with the uncertainty of what the general assembly's going to do and the timing, we do recommend that this action be taken. Note that it won't trigger a public hearing unless and until the bill is passed, and then we'd permit a 120-day period in which the plant commission could gear up and actually publish the notice to begin its hearings. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is the, is the text of this resolution on our website so everyone can read it?
It isn't yet, but we can put it on there after this evening.
Right, because when I ask for a motion on this, I'm not going to have the person read the entire text of the resolution. You've summarized it, I think, adequately.
I have.
So, if there are no questions, could I have a motion to adopt the resolution in front of us?
So...
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and that completes my report for this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Next, our comments by council members, and before we get to the finance committee, we're going to have Mr. Alderman Moore talk about Croya.
I have a couple of Croya announcements. First of all, the Lake Forest Lake Bluff Winter Dance will be on December 8th from 7:30 to 10 o'clock at Croya. Tickets are $5 and must be purchased in advance. The theme of the dance is "Croyola," so come dressed in one color like a crayon. Any questions, you can call Croya or go to croya.com. And the second thing is, the winter break hours will be from the day after Christmas, the 26th through the 28th, they'll be open from 10 to 3, and from January 2nd to January 4th, they'll also be open from 10 to 3. So, come hang out with the Croya crowd. So, that was it. Thank you.
So, are you, are you waxing enthusiastic about the theme?
Absolutely.
Sorry. Sorry. All right.
It sounds like it'll be colorful.
Yes.
Apology accepted.
All right. Next is Alderman Pendeleon.
Thank you. My role here is to make a report from the finance committee. We have a number of items where the city council needs to act officially on some things that we've already discussed. The first is consideration of an ordinance establishing the tax levy for 2012, and we will be seeking final approval. Elizabeth Hollab will make a brief review of the conversation we had last, at our last meeting.
Okay. Before she starts, I think I need a motion to open the public hearing on this matter.
Oh, sorry.
So, could I have a motion to open this for a public hearing?
So, move. Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Proceed. We could use some crayons.
Did we approve the podium yet, or?
Yeah, it won't take two people. Hopefully, it won't take two people to do this anymore.
Okay, I'll give you a verbal summary.
Thank you.
As a summary, the tax levy process began, there we go. Step one of the tax levy process was conducted on November 5th at the city council meeting. In compliance with the truth in taxation law under state statutes, the city determined the proposed aggregate tax levy. Under state law, that is required to be determined at least 20 days prior to the adoption of the tax levy ordinance. You can see that compared to the 2011 levy extended for the aggregate levy and the debt service levy, the 2012 levy estimates were determined, and it was determined that the aggregate levy increase over the 2011 levy extended was a 5.44% increase over last year. The debt service levy was a 2.54% decrease compared to the prior year, with a total of the two, representing a 4.90% increase over the prior year. These did not include levies excluded from the truth in taxation statute. Now, with the aggregate levy increase, only a portion of the aggregate levy increase actually impacts the average homeowner's tax bill, with a large portion resulting from new growth represented by the TIF expiration and new construction. So, the 5.44% increase was actually made up of three components. 3% represented the property tax cap applicable to the 2012 levies, which do impact an average property tax bill. The TIF expiration represented 2.2%, which do not, does not impact the average tax bill, and 0.24% represented new construction, which together was the 5.44% increase in the aggregate levy. Step two of the process was the first reading of the tax levy ordinance, which was the 11, November 19th city council meeting. In this summary, you can see the total tax levy of the city proposed. This includes the aggregate levy, the debt service levy, and now includes the excluded levies, which are the Fire Pension Public Act 930689 levy, which is the portion of the fire pension levy that is excluded under state statutes from the tax cap, and the special recreation levy, which is under state statute, also excluded from the property tax cap. And you can see that the total tax levy of the city proposed for 2012 of $27,235,836 represented a 4.81% increase over the 2011 extended levy. Because of the school district 67 operating under charter of, included in the city, it must be included in the city's tax levy ordinance, so you can see the school district 67's estimated levy also included. Their proposed increase is 5.75%. Their levy will be considered on December 11th, so their adopted levy will be included in the final tax levy ordinance that's filed with the county by December 21st. Their increase also is affected by the TIF expiration, so the additional growth of increment that is added to the tax rolls this year because of the levy expiration is included in the 5.75% as well. This just includes a distribution of property tax dollars. This shows, based on the 2011 levy, where an average property in Lake Forest, the distribution of tax dollars between the different taxing districts in Lake Forest. You can see that the City of Lake Forest represents 19.3% of the tax bill, and the city library is 3%. So, the tax levy that's being considered by the city council today represents only 22.3% of the total tax bill. This slide shows the impact of the proposed levy. In the top, you can see just a summary of the 2012 levy compared to the 2011 extended levy, the three components, which is the levy before growth and exclusions, represents the 3% change, which is the property tax cap, the growth in exclusions of 979,000 compared to last year of 401,000, and the debt service levy change of minus 2.54%, and then again, you see the total 4.81% change. And then below, you can see that based on assessed valuation estimates provided by the county and the proposed levy, what our projected impact on the average existing home, a market value of $800,000 for the 2011 extended levy would be, based on estimates provided by Lake County, a market value of $739,200 for the 2012 levy, the projected tax rate of 1.1471 compared to last year of 1.035 would result in a tax bill of $2,826 compared to last year, $2,760 would be a dollar change of $66 or 2.41%. And again, this is only the 22.3%, which is the city and library portions of the tax bill. Because under truth in taxation, the aggregate levy is a percentage increase of over 105% over the extended levy last year. A public hearing is required, therefore, public notice of the required public... Therefore, public notice of the required public hearing was published in the New Sun on November 22nd and the Lake Forester on November 29th. So, the public hearing was published for today. And following the public hearing, it is recommended that the City Council grant final approval to the ordinance establishing the tax levy for 2012, and the tax levy is required to be filed by Lake -- with Lake County by December 21st, 2012. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, could I have a motion to close public discussion on this matter?
Someone? Someone? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Discussion is closed. Can we proceed to a vote at this point?
And I'll move for a grant of final approval of the ordinance establishing the tax levy for the year 2012 for the City of Lake Forest.
We have a second?
Second? Roll call.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalion.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on my agenda is a -- an ordinance abating 2012 tax levies for various general obligation alternate revenue bond issues, and we'll be seeking final approval on this as well, also presented by Elizabeth Hollab.
This is, again, second reading and granting final approval. This is also related to the tax levy. This is a package of four ordinances. This is related to the debt service levy component of the tax levy. These are debt service levies. They are bonds that are to be paid off by alternative revenue sources other than property taxes. They include water, sales tax, and golf course revenues. These are ordinances that simply direct Lake County to reduce the tax levy by the amounts for which we have alternative revenue sources available to pay the debt service amounts coming due in the following year.
Okay. Could I have a motion?
Grant final approval for the ordinances abating the tax levies for the said general obligation bond issues.
Second? Roll call.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalion.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the Finance Committee's agenda is consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule and ordinance is adopting new fees related to parks and recreation and development activity. And again, we're seeking final approval.
Correct.
Elizabeth?
This is second reading and final approval of an ordinance approving a fee schedule for the City of Lake Forest, as well as two ordinances, one being an ordinance adopting new fees related to parks and recreation, and a second ordinance adopting new fees related to development activity. Memos were included in the packet explaining the proposed new fees for both parks and recreation and development activity, and the ordinance approving a fee schedule included an exhibit depicting all of the fees currently charged by the city, with those fees proposed to be changed highlighted in yellow.
Okay, could I have a motion?
And I'll move to grant final approval to the ordinances approving the fee schedule for the City of Lake Forest and adopting new fees related to parks and recreation and development activity.
Second? Roll call.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalion.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is consideration of ordinances providing for the refinancing of special service area 25, 26, and 29 bonds, again seeking final approval, and again being presented by Elizabeth Hollab.
Special service areas 25, 26, and 29 all have bonds associated with them financed through Lake Forest Bank and Trust. The bonds are paid by the benefiting property owners through property tax assessments. Lake Forest Bank and Trust has offered an across-the-board reduction in the interest rates of 1.5%. So, this package of ordinances would amend the ordinances associated with the special service areas, adopt new tax rolls associated with the special service areas, and abate taxes, allowing for the refinancing and reduce the property tax assessments associated with the special service areas. The reduced interest costs, less any issuance costs associated with the refinancing, would be completely passed through to the benefiting property owners, so there is no financial impact to the city.
The only question I had on it is, in Section 6, there's an appropriation section where the city's appropriating $8,000 to pay for the costs of the issue -- or the new issue, but there's nothing in the ordinance that really absorbs the cost back into -- it's a city paying, but it's not pushing it back towards the persons who are benefiting from the reduction.
If I might be -- if you actually went through all the schedules, you'll note that the amount of the bonds and the amount of the taxes to be levied is that $8,000 difference.
Okay.
And that's how it's absorbed. The appropriation is in there so that in addition to paying the bonds, to make up that expenditure of the $8,000, it's authorized by that provision.
So, it is built in?
Yes.
Okay, I actually read it. Thanks.
Would it be appropriate to ask what the interest rate is after the 1.5% reduction?
It actually -- the interest rate changes each year because the...
Then today's rate, then, I guess?
Ah.
Or the rate that is effectively operating -- the last one you remembered. I don't mean to -- is it a reasonable rate?
It is a reasonable rate. We actually had a spare financial look at it.
Oh, they did.
To make sure that it was competitive in today's market, and they thought it was.
If you look -- Alderman Moore, if you look on page 65 of the packet, the printed packet, you'll note that the rates range from 1.95 to, I believe, 2.95 at the high end, and it sort of increases as you cascade down in the years. But that's a difference from 3.45 and 4.45, so that's the marginal change that Elizabeth talked about.
It's a great move. Who in the city approached the bank? I just want to say congratulations. That's good move. Nice catch.
Okay, could I have a motion?
I'll move to grant final approval of the ordinance providing for the refinancing of special service areas 25, 26, and 29 special tax bonds.
I think 26 -- did you say 26, too?
25, 26, and 29.
Okay.
As a clarification, that's all six of the ordinances that were in the packet, correct?
So moved. Second? Roll call.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalion.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is authorization of a payment to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in the amount of $3,735,867 to retire in advance the early retirement incentive program liability, also presented by Elizabeth Hollab.
The City of Lake Forest, in conjunction with the Library and School District 67, offered an early retirement program to Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund employees from April 2011 to April 2012. Twenty-six city, two library, and six school district employees elected to participate in that early retirement incentive program. Based on the city's 26 participating employees, it was determined that over the 10-year term of the program, $4.5 million net savings would be realized as a result of the program. However, IMRF will assess the city 7.5% interest in paying off that liability over the 10-year program. So, we brought back to the Finance Committee the potential of realizing additional savings and interest costs from the $4.5 million savings by paying off that liability on a more accelerated schedule. And in October, the Finance Committee considered various options, and staff were asked to talk to the school district about those options to see what viability they had in doing the same thing because they shared that liability. In November, it was reported to the Finance Committee that the school district was not only able but also interested in participating in an accelerated payoff and was willing to do any of the payoff options, including an immediate payoff of the entire liability. And so, the Finance Committee asked staff to bring back today that option. And so, this is the result of that work with the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and it was determined that in order to pay off the full liability by December 31st, 2013, a payment of $4,275,000 would be required by the end of this year. And that is shared between the library, the city, and the school district. So, this is the proposed payment of $3,735,867 is the city and library portion of that payment, and that in addition to the School District 67 portion of the payment, which is $539,133, if paid by December 31st, 2012, in addition to the amortization, which is already factored into the city's rate for 2013, should fully amortize the liability by the end of calendar year 2013. So, therefore, it is recommended that the city authorize the staff to make this payment by December 31st, 2012, contingent upon the School District Board authorizing the payment at their board meeting on December 11th.
Could I have a motion?
I'll move for approval of payment to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in the amount of $3,735,867 to retire in advance the early retirement incentive program liabilities, and that that motion be contingent upon School District 67 authorizing payment of their portion of the liability at their December 11th meeting.
Is there a second?
Second. Roll call.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalion.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Mr. Acting Mayor, if I may, I just want to again point out, Elizabeth, this is extraordinary. I mean, when you really think about it, when we put the ERI in place 18 months or so ago, I think, Bob, the number you mentioned was a savings to the city of $4.5 million over a 10-year period. By realizing that through very frugal and very smart fiscal management in the city, we had reserve cash that made sense to use this, and now we're saving 1.77 million. So, this entire package has kind of saved us, what, $4.2, $4.3 million? That, I think, is really a terrific thing. It's to be commended to you, to staff, to Bob, and the team. It's -- that shows, I think, should show all of us, the City of Lake Forest, that we're paying attention. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to reiterate that I am a businessperson, but I'm not a municipal finance expert. I was, you know, I came in as the finance chair here about two years ago, and one of the very first things that was put in front of me was this wonderful arbitrage opportunity that we had to pay off some bonds early and reduce our overall debt service costs significantly. And on the heels of that, we said, hm, let's go looking around and see where else we can do anything like this. And I -- we should add up -- we really should stop and add it all up because it's got to be approaching $10 million at this point. I mean, we have neighbors who tonight benefited directly to the tune of almost $200,000 in savings on borrowings associated with water and sewer improvements that were put into their neighborhoods. You know, these are real -- this is real money, and I think -- and we'll keep looking for it. And Elizabeth has done a wonderful job, and Kathy Reinderson, her predecessor, of finding these opportunities, bringing them to the City Council's attention, and saving us all a lot of money as taxpayers. So, thank you.
And that's why the City of Lake Forest has a higher bond ring than the State of Illinois or the United States of America.
The State of Illinois is a very low bar.[1525.51][1525.51](Laughter). I think it's 51st out of 50.
Yeah. Okay, next -- thank you, George. Any other comments from Alderman? If not, the next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone who wishes to do that? If not, we will move on to items for omnibus vote consideration. There are three of them, four of them. The first is to approve the check register for the period October 27th through November 21st, 2012. The second is the award of a bid for the replacement of the water plant sewage ejector system using fiscal year 2013 water fund capital improvement monies. The third is the award -- a bid for the purchase of low-range turbo diimeters for each membrane filtration skid. And the fourth is the approval of the November 19th, 2012 regular City Council minute meetings. Does anyone wish to break those out? If not, could I have a motion to approve the items under omnibus vote consideration?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second?
Is this a roll call?
Yes.
It's a roll call.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalion.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, under new business, we have an item. It's the consideration of the appeal of the city manager's denial of the Public Safety Employee Benefit Act benefits for former Lake Forest firefighter Todd Netherington. The City Council has reviewed Mr. Netherington's PSEBA application briefs on behalf of the city manager and himself, and the proposed orders from each of the parties. If anyone wishes to make comment -- anyone from the public wishes to make comments, they are welcome to do so now, but this is not -- should be not be considered the oral argument. We have already read the briefs, and it is argued. And if there's -- is there anyone who wishes to make any comments? Does anyone from the City Council wish to make any comments before we ask for a motion? If not, could I have a motion?
Yeah, and at this point, I'd move to approve a resolution affirming denial of the health insurance benefits claim of Todd Netherington under placebo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Should this be a roll call vote?
Please.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalion.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
All right, and I believe that concludes the business of the council for this evening. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Well done. That was good.